Thank you for attending the meeting of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. Just important that I just read out some preamble as we do all of our meetings. Of course, the meeting is open to the public. There are no items in the agenda that contain any exempt information. The meeting will be webcast and recorded and will also be available for people to look at later on the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We've received no public questions or statements for today's meeting as part of our new petitions and public questions scheme. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today and they do take place at different points now in the town hall in the working week, but if there is an emergency evacuation then please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is Tudor Square. I'm going to ask that each committee member in turn introduce themselves and also if you're an officer from a seated position, I might also ask you to introduce yourself if that is okay. I will start with the wonderful councillor Shaw. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you Chair. Councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Beaumont Green Hill and member of this committee.
Councillor Andrew Sanger, councillor for Fullwood Ward and group spokesperson on this committee.
Councillor Ian Horner, councillor for Baiton Ward and member of this committee.
Councillor Ruth Mercerow, councillor for City Ward and member of this committee.
Councillor Alexey Diamond from Gleedless Valley Ward and deputy chair of this committee.
Hi, I'm Craig Gumbel-Pew, I'm councillor for East Ecclesfield Ward.
Good morning councillor Janet Riddler, member for Stockspur, junior of Paldon.
Good morning, I'm John Wright, councillor for Walkley Ward.
Thank you councillor Wright. And I'm councillor Ben Miskell, I'm chair of this committee and councillor for Parkham, Arbuthorn Ward. I'm just going to go to my left for those officers who are seated. Of course, other officers will be presenting today, but they're not on microphone at the moment and will introduce themselves when they present. Shaun?
Yeah, I'm Shaun McLean, I'm director of regeneration and development in city futures.
I'm Will Stewart, I'm director of investment, climate change and planning, also in city futures.
I'm Robert Parkin, assistant director for legal services and deputy monitor officer.
Hi everyone, I'm Rachel Appiar, principal democratic services officer.
Thank you colleagues for introducing yourself today. We'll move forward with our agenda and item one is apologies for absence. I'm going to ask whether we have received any apologies for absence, but looking at colleagues in the room, I think that we have a full house, is that correct?
Yeah, no apologies, yeah.
So no apologies, thank you very much. That would move us on to item two, which is a standard item on all of our agendas, which is an opportunity for us to consider whether there is need to exclude the public or press. The meeting, of course, today is open to the public and there's no items on the agenda that contain exempt information. Item three of our agenda is an opportunity for members to declare an interest and can I ask any member who wishes to declare an interest to declare that and also to explain the item of business on the agenda that it refers to? Also, if you could ask you to state whether it's a pecuniary or personal interest and outline the reason for the declaration, which sounds very formal, doesn't it? But are there any declarations of interest? There are no specific declarations of interest. So therefore we'll move on to item four on our agenda, which is an opportunity to consider the minutes of our previous meeting. As a correct record, that meeting was held on the 24th of July, so some time ago before our summer holidays. Hopefully people had an opportunity to get away for a few days. Are there any points that or matters arising from those minutes that anyone would like to flag up? There's something on page 12 that I'd like to flag up. It was just with regards to a public question and petition that came to me that I answered on behalf of the committee. It's just on page 12 and it was with regards to the Castle Croft Drive residents who were asking the council to consider a resident parking scheme. At that point, I said, having spoken to other political leaders in the committee, that we would investigate whether such a scheme could be delivered on a cost neutral basis and ask for an assessment to be made about that and to write back to residents in due course. I understand that we've not been able to do that yet, but it is something that we aim to do to get back to those petitioners, which is very important. Can I ask committee members whether they're content with approving the minutes of our last meeting from the 24th of July? I can see nods around the room, so therefore we will approve those minutes of our previous meeting, so thank you and I think I will sign those perhaps at the end of the meeting. Item five is an opportunity for the public to ask questions and present petitions. We do have a new public questions scheme as well as our legacy petition scheme. That's operating under the new scheme for public questions and statements. There's been no petitions, questions or statements received for today's meeting, but for members of the public who may well be watching at home, they are welcome to submit questions and petitions for our next meeting as well and we'd always welcome that. Item six is an opportunity for members to ask questions. None have been received. Hopefully that's a reflection of the fact that we do have regular briefings and meetings outside the context of these meetings as well, where members of this committee can ask questions and make points and there's ongoing discussion and dialogue, but we've received no formal member questions. There's also an opportunity to ask questions for people outside of this committee if you are a member at full council as well. So therefore we move on to item seven, which is the work programme. That is on page 21 of your agenda pack and this is a piece of work that's drawn together by Rachel, who is sat at the side of me. Rachel?
Thank you Chair. So the work programme shows all the known substantive agenda items for forthcoming meetings of this committee. There are a few things just to draw members' attention to. So at the full council meeting last week, there were a couple of petitions that were then referred on to this committee as part of future reports. One was on pedestrianisation of Surrey Street and the other was on double yellow lines in Neeps End. So these will be picked up through the work programme and reports coming forward that are already on there. The table on page 24 of the agenda pack contains the changes since the last meeting. You'll see that there's been a number of items that have been moved between the October and November meetings. That's in working with officers to try and spread the business out around those. One additional change since the agenda was published is the TCF city centre report, which appears at the start of the items for October. This will be coming to the November meeting instead due to timescales around the consultation. From page 29 onwards, you can see the agenda items for each of the upcoming meetings and I'll hand over to officers if you've got any specific questions on items. Thank you.
Thank you Rachel for taking us through that. I should also make the wider committee aware that in our pre-meetings to this committee meeting, we did talk about the importance of ordering agenda items appropriately in future committee meetings in order to be able to give sufficient scrutiny and spotlight certain pieces of work that the public may want us to do so. And I think one of those was on page 31, which is the Sheffield Walking, Wheeling and Cycling Investment Plan and that's an engagement report and network development priorities. I know that we all feel very passionately about that and would have lots of contributions to make and I think the reflection from colleagues was that we would like that to be reordered further up the agenda, so of course that will happen. So I don't think what we see in front of us necessarily is a reflection of the order that they will necessarily appear on the agenda. And I can see that Will Stewart is nodding there. Councillor Sanger?
Yes Chair, and you know, except we, you know, the work plan is a living document and not, you know, not a fixed, not a fixed list of what's going to be on the agenda in October, November. Yeah, there are only, you know, three substantive items today and there are clearly 14 proposed for October, although 13 of what you said, of the changes you made. Equally, November's going to be very busy. Do we actually think we can get through the current agendas on for October and November as they're currently written? Because it seems to me that that's too many items to, you know, to give due consideration to. And there's nothing there I want to take off, so it's about finding extra time. And the other question, I thought in other places we talked about the potential of bringing the local plan back at the end of this calendar year. And I thought at the very least that should be on the items of that we haven't put on a particular, on a particular meeting date.
Thank you councillor Sanger. I'll just take councillor Diamond's question or point as well and then we can ask officers to reflect on those. Councillor Diamond?
Thank you Chair. Whilst I agree with what Andrew said regarding the work plan in the next two meetings seems to be, you know, really, really full, I do think we should consider adding to the work plan as a committee, an item on the bus service because members will be acutely aware of the recent changes to services and cuts and mergers that are affecting our communities. I'm sure everyone's got a full case bag, case emails from residents who have lost their bus service. One of the areas that are particularly affected is residents that live near Gleedless Road, so Healy, Healy Green and Arbuthorn. The changes there mean that people don't have a viable bus service and it's particularly affecting pensioners that live on their own. So 69 point, well 69, nearly 70% of pensioners who live on their own do not own a car in Healy and Newfield Green. In Arbuthorn, the figure's 80% or 89, 81% nearly. So the loss of the number 11 bus has a huge impact on them at a time when the winter fuel allowance is going to be withdrawn. So I'd like to request that we have a feasibility study, given what the government has proposed on public ownership of buses and allowing, allowing councils to do that, a study of, you know, what the prospects of that could be in Sheffield and how we could fund that. So either, yeah, a report to committee, but obviously not immediately, later in the year after the budget.
Thank you councillor Diamond. I'll just take just one other point, I think, from councillor Gumbel-Pew and all the stats officers to reflect.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to echo the need for us to get more across the issue of the buses on this committee. At our North Local Area Committee, LAC, meeting last night, myself and other members across Ecclesfield, Chapel Town and the parts of the north of the city raised the fact that the recent changes in buses has caused a lot of confusion. It's yet another salami slice of cuts. I've got children who are depending on the public buses to get to school and there've been some difficulties in these first couple of weeks. I've got a full inbox of people inquiring about what's going on. And although we understand that the responsibility lies with the Mayoral Combined Authority, when people see that we are members of the Transport Committee, they expect us to be, have a bit more power and certainly a bit more knowledge. And I did, I seem to recall, I was talking at one point about inviting the mayor to come to a TRC committee meeting, potentially supported by officers from the combined authority. I think that'd be really useful just as a focal point to kind of get some public awareness as well as member awareness. So I'd like to, I think that is supporting what the previous suggestion was.
Thank you councillor Gumbel-Pew. And councillor Mercerow, is it related to the points that have already been established that you'd like to further on? I'll just hand over to you.
Thank you, yeah. I'd just like to point out that the bus issue is an equalities issue that relates to poverty, gender and disability, bearing in mind that roughly a third of Sheffield people don't have access to a vehicle at all. They're being offered a third class service or no service at all. So people who finish in the city centre after six o'clock at night often haven't got a bus that will get them home or the bus frequency will be at two hourly, which is no good at all. Offering a scant service at night also doesn't help the night time economy at a time when leisure, leisure industries and the night time economy are key to the regeneration of the city centre. I'd also like to point out there's been a real lack of communication and that the timetables that are on the bus stops are often not accurate. So this is a real issue and it's, like I say, one of equalities that we really need to address.
Thank you councillor Mercerow. I'll just reflect for a second just about the points about buses. I think people have very eloquently made those points and it's quite clear that there is cross-party support for the committee to add to our work programme, buses. And I think it's really timely, isn't it? Because we know that before Parliament, there is a new bill about buses that has been brought forward by our Secretary of State, but we also know, don't we, that progress has been made at Mayoral Combined, a region level, to push forward to the next stage of bus franchising, which will be announcing the outcome of the audit that has been conducted. So I think it will be timely for us to get an update on those. I think we've also had reflections about the issues with the recent bus service changes that people have seen throughout the city and I know that councillor Diamond raises those important points that have impacted particularly people in Healy Green, in Arbuthorn and Gleedless Valley. And I've certainly had those points that have been made in my inbox as well and I've responded back to the Gleedless Valley Tara who'd been in touch with us about it. So I think it would be right for us to seek to add that to the work programme. At the moment, we don't necessarily know where that would be, but we should take those discussions outside this room for our knowledge briefings and meetings so that we can look at how we can bring that forward and when the best opportunity for us to do so. I think there is also suggestion that we should get people from South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority to come along. As I understand it, they are just appointing a new director of bus service reform as well, so it may well be particularly timely to do so. Can I just ask officers, I think it'd probably be, Will, just to reflect on some of those wider points that were made and Shaun might be able to also add to them from other colleagues, I think particularly councillor Sanger made about those other items that we could well seek to add to the work programme?
Thanks Chair. I'll take the items around the work plan first and then maybe just offer some thoughts around some of the bus issues that councillors have raised this morning. I think, yeah, we do recognise the points that councillor Sanger has raised and I think, you know, we, Shaun and I have been working with officers over the last few weeks to look at how we might more equitably distribute items across the next two or three TRC committee meetings. We have done some of that, but we are meeting again next week just to do a final review, just to see if we can smooth things out a little bit more. As we all, as we know in TRC, this is one of the busiest committees in this council. We've got a huge amount to get through. I do think though Chair, that the suggestion around re-prioritising the items that come to committee, to take those items first that require perhaps more debate in the chamber is a really good idea. There are some items, as we know, that come through that are, although they're still very, very important, are more straightforward in terms of reaching a decision and we will aim to put those towards the end of the meeting so we can get through that business quite quickly. And I hope with that combination of a reorganisation and a redistribution across committees that we will try and ease some of the pressure. But invariably, you know, there are, there are a huge number of items that need to come through this committee and we simply have to get through them. And if that means, you know, extension where absolutely necessary, we might have to take advantage of that. But it is under constant review and we will work with Rachel. I hope by the end of next week, we'll have a definitive position on what's going to October and what's proposed to go to November, so hopefully that answers those questions. Just on bus, you know, note what councillor said in the meeting this morning and if, and if you're happy Chair, I'm more than happy to take those requests to SimCA colleagues, perhaps as part of the enhanced partnership process, but also directly to those colleagues that are going to be picking up responsibilities for bus to lay out our concerns as a committee and maybe ask for their suggestions on how they might support this committee in terms of further updates, in terms of progress on both the franchising audit as you've suggested. But if that audit finds that the Mayoral Combined Authority wants to move forward with a franchise model, there will be a public consultation process. And I think there is really an important time for us as a committee to reflect on how that operates, how we really get the voice of communities into that public consultation, how members are able to represent their constituents in that consultation as well. So I think there's plenty there for us to work with, with SimCA. As you've mentioned Chair, SimCA are going through a quite a rapid process at the moment of recruiting to some vacancies within the combined authority and two of those posts actually will be directly related to bus, I think in anticipation of the quite significant workload if franchising is approved to move forward. So I do expect that there will be further capacity. I think just a final point and just noting what members have talked about in terms of bus services in Sheffield, of course, we are doing quite a lot as a committee where we can. Obviously we don't control the buses, what we can do is introduce capital programmes to help support reliability, resilience and priority for buses. And members of this committee have already approved a number of schemes in Sheffield where we're committing significant sums of money to improve reliability, to improve frequency of service. We are doing what we can at a local level through capital investment to support the bus services, but of course, we don't have direct control of the operators and some of the concerns expressed today around changes to routes and timetabling are the preserve of MCA and of the bus operators. That's not, you know, an excuse by any means, but that's just the reality of the situation. But I'm happy to take those points away Chair, if you're comfortable with that and maybe bring some suggestions back to committee in the form of a knowledge briefing first so that members can understand the situation and then members can decide how they would like to express some of those views publicly at a future committee.
Thank you, Will. Can I just ask before, I'm just coming back for councillor Sanger and councillor Horner, I think there's also a wider point about the local plan as well and we've discussed this outside this place, making sure that there's an update for this committee, but my understanding is, but if I'm wrong, the timetable for that whilst it is established, there are some perhaps unknowns about some of the timings and we're yet to understand when the opportune moment would be for things to come back to this committee, but you'll perhaps be able to clarify more?
Yeah, apologies Chair, I should have come back on local plan as well. No, no, your analysis is right. I think that there is a little bit of fluidity around when the most opportune point to come back to report to committee on progress is, but we are obviously very, very clear that we do need to come back to update this committee on progress with local plan. Members will be aware that we've already had the first of our public hearings. That was around the spatial strategy, spatial policy and options. The second round of committees on site allocations will be beginning in the next week or so and then the third around development management policy will be happening in October and November. I think we would like to get through those hearings if we could Chair, before we come back to committee with an update on process. Of course, there will be an opportunity, of course, you know, full council will decide ultimately on the final form of the plan, following any modifications that are required of the inspectorate team. But I think it's right that we come back for an interim update on progress, particularly around the committees and some of the issues that have come up through those hearings, that we come back to a future TRC committee. So for me, that feels like an early committee in the new year, once we're through the, through the hearing process, but obviously happy to be guided by members on that.
Thank you, Will. And I think noting the points that were made about the committee's desire to make sure that local plan was on here, whilst we don't necessarily have a solid idea of which meeting that will be, even though the early indications are that it will be early in the new year, it might be a good idea if we were just to add that to future versions of this report to page 34 on that items that the committee have agreed to be on the agenda, which haven't yet had a date set. And I can see colleagues, colleagues nodding there. Councillor Sanger and then councillor Horner. Councillor Sanger?
Thank you Chair and thanks, and thanks Will for the, for coming back in terms of the local plan. I mean, my understanding is that if the council is going to put in modifications, it's really, it would be really important that members of TRC have an opportunity to understand that and, you know, express their views at, you know, at this, at this public meeting. So in January, February is probably the right time. I'm really keen that the council has a local plan and we adopt one at the end of 2025 and that we don't have any more slippage. 1995 is a long time ago in terms of when the last plan was adopted and we do need a refreshed local plan. So yeah, really important that that happens. Just on the subject of buses, yeah, fully accept what colleagues have said and when we had the, you know, the first year of TRC, we did have regular meetings with SimCA colleagues and one of the challenges is finding time for all these briefings. But the sad truth is, and I completely accept the point that councillor Gumbel-Pew made, that we've had bus cuts year on year since 1986 and some communities have a very poor bus service and these recent cuts in services in September have made, made it even more difficult. So, you know, those of us who've been arguing for franchising for 14, 15 years, I'm really pleased that there's, you know, that we're getting to the next stage, but we're only getting to the next stage. And the reality at the current legislation is the power is with the bus companies. So yes, we can be briefed and all the rest, but we just need, we need those extra powers and those extra decisions because at the moment, the people in Sheffield do not have a great bus service. And we've said it many, many times, that however important active travel is, Sheffield relies on buses. Most, many of our communities rely on buses. The city is too big for everybody to walk and not everybody wants to cycle. So buses are a key part of the transport for the city. So absolutely support what colleagues have said in terms of bringing bus briefings back to us, but also having something in public on the agenda so we can ask the mayor and mayoral, mayoral officers about where we are. We're trying to improve the bus services in Sheffield. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanger. I can see that colleagues across the committee today are certainly in agreement with you. Councillor Horner, you always love a good point about buses, so I'm looking forward to your contribution.
Thank you Chair, yeah, I do support, support that point, but I wanted to make a wider point as well about if we are going to have the mayoral briefings, can we also talk about the trams? Because we're fortunate in the South East in having the tram, but particularly for young people, because, and this is a wider point, which is shared by members across the South East irrespective party, we've been banging on about the lack of sixth form provision. So the tram service to the South East is really important for students to get to sixth form provision, because there is no sixth form provision in the South East. But also the wider point is to look at where we are with investment in the trams, because of course, I can say the first question I got as a newly elected councillor was in fact from a member of the Labour Party in Baiton, saying, would I continue to support reopening Baiton Railway Station? Of course, the government has now cancelled restoring your railways. So I'd be interested to know, as indeed I asked a question at council, where we are with future investment plans in the network. So yes, I support everybody on the buses, but taking the wider point about transport, the importance of getting investment in the trams, I welcome the work that's going on to improve reliability, but essentially we also need new trams whether we expand the network or not. So I'd like that to be widened, thanks.
Thank you councillor Horner and I'm sure the committee would agree to, whilst the focus will be on buses, we also need to make sure that we've got an integrated transport system. So certainly adding that lens about trams to the work programme when it comes to any item of buses would certainly be very welcomed. I've got councillor Diamond and then councillor Gumbel-Pew.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to add a bit to what councillor Horner said in terms of that we need to be
in terms of that we need to be considering and talking about investment, both in the buses and the trams. And that does include capital work such as improvements to shelters, electronic timetables and things like that. So, you know, if people are waiting for a bus in the rain, they have some shelter and it's a bit more comfortable than it currently is because currently a lot of the places, a lot of bus stops are really poor with, as we said before, no accurate timetables and nobody's got a clue if, whether the bus is going or not, especially if you don't have a phone. So we do need to be considering how, as well as the, the capital programmes are funded, the actual bus services and trams themselves. And we need to see options for how we can fund them. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Diamond and councillor Campbell-Pew.
Yeah, just a quick one. I'm just conscious that the discussion has gone into discussing the value and benefit of briefings. I just want to reiterate, my proposal was that we add to the work plan an item for the mayor and the mayoral authority to attend, to discuss and update the committee in a committee meeting.
Thank you councillor Campbell-Pew. I, I think there's cross-party support that we would have an item there about buses, but also touching on wider issues about public transport that councillor Horner has made with regards to trams as well. We've talked about and Will has reflected about some changes to staffing in order to kind of beef up that bus reform function that is happening at South East Shemell Combined Authority. So it is a good opportune moment to, to, to seek to develop briefings on us outside this space, but then discuss how we can bring it forward into the public arena in, in these committees as well. So, so we'll certainly, certainly do that. I think it's probably important also to reflect as well that there's some interesting things going on across the city about making sure that citizens have good access to timetable information. At bus stops, there's a trial of e Ink displays that's happening in one part of the city at the moment, which is a new fancy technology that won't require power to make sure that there is a visual display that's updated live, it's dynamic with the information coming to passengers about when their next bus will be and using onboard sensors to buses as well. So there's, there's trials of innovation that can be rolled out in the future as well, that we want to see along various different bus corridors. Because ultimately, everyone in this room wants to see more options for people about how they move around the city and create a patronage levels. Now, people have, have reflected, colleagues have reflected on, on the importance of that item and we would all agree. I'm not sure that there's anything necessary for, for officers to kind of come back on there. We've agreed that we'll, we'll take it outside this space, discuss at our knowledge briefings and seek to bring that on the agenda for future meetings as well. Councillor Campbell-Pew?
Sorry, just to be clear on the point of order, has the committee then resolved by consensus that we will add that to the work plan and that we will invite the mayor?
Thank you councillor Campbell-Pew. I, I think we've, we've said that we will work with South East Shemell Combined Authority in order to be able to develop briefings for members outside this space, but also bring an item to this committee. Whether, when that occurs is of course a matter for this committee to decide outside this space. We can't really do that in this arena. Let's move forward with our agenda and we have three items of, of formal business today. So could I please remind everyone of the process that we're going to be following? Now, officers will be invited to present their reports to the committee members and the public have an access to the reports in advance. So please, we're going to assume that members of course have read the reports and that high level summary is being provided to us. And those things are very important with regards to making sure that the committee runs smoothly and effectively. Once officers have presented the report, that'll be followed by questions from members to the officers. Once all questions have been asked and responses have been provided, we'll then move on to a wider discussion if that of course is necessary. After that discussion has taken place and the recommendation has been moved and seconded, a vote will be taken on that particular item. Now, there are three items for formal decision on our agenda today, items eight, nine and ten. Normally we have many more items on our agenda, but we're fairly light today. So it was good to be able to have space to have that wider discussion about the work programme. So item eight is our twenty twenty four, twenty five quarter one budget monitoring update. It's on page thirty nine of our agenda pack and I understand that Craig Whelan is from finance is going to run us through it. Craig, Craig, would you be able to just come to the microphone and just introduce yourself again, if that's okay? Thank you.
Can you all hear me? Thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you Chair. So I'm Craig Whelan, senior finance manager of Support City Futures. So I'm here deputising for Jane Willby. I'll give a high level overview in terms of the financial position at Q1, going to cover what the council position is and then we'll go into the, the committee area itself. So the report presents the council's twenty four, twenty five Q1 financial position, highlights the significant financial challenges that the council is currently facing, the drivers behind these and the steps that we're taking to address them. Council is currently projecting an overspend of thirty four point three million pounds for the financial year twenty four, twenty five. The overspend represents about seven percent of our net revenue budget. So main area or main drivers are increased service demands, rising costs and reduced funding. Key areas affected, housing and homelessness, adults and children's social care and SEN, home to trans, home to school transport. In terms of the factors that contributing towards that, inflation is a significant, significant contributor, increasing the overall cost base and in some cases, service costs arising above the rate of inflation. On top of this, funding levels haven't kept in place, as you guys, you are probably aware actually, and these helped create a significant gap. Sheffield has eight hundred and fifty eight pounds per household less to spend in real terms when comparing where we are now to twenty ten, twenty eleven. This reduction is above the national average, which is about five hundred and fifty six pounds. So severe reduction, it's placed additional strain on our ability to deliver services. In terms of financial reserves, we do have reserves set aside to manage the risk associated with the budget overspend and we'll be proposing to draw on these during this year. We've also got an additional reserve set aside for housing benefit subsidy loss. So, but using reserves is a short-term solution and it's not sustainable in the longer term. So just want to kind of echo, and I think you're all aware of this, this is a serious financial position that we're in. Finance teams are actively working with offices across the council to identify areas to implement cost savings and measures. We're also developing strategies to manage and mitigate demand pressures and efforts are also being made to increase income wherever possible. In terms of the sector, we know that we're not unique in this position. Local authorities are under a lot of strain, as is the public sector as a whole, including NHS, schools and higher education institutions, which does limit the potential for government relief. So the council's key response to the financial challenges is the Future Sheffield Programme. This initiative is focused on transforming our services to create a more sustainable and efficient operating model. Transformation is essential to ensure we are continuing to deliver statutory services whilst supporting the city growth at the same time. Our transformation efforts are aligned to the council's broader strategic goals and will play a huge part in our budget setting process for the coming year. Our medium-term financial strategy published in July has identified a budget gap of sixty eight point nine million over four years, with thirty one million falling into twenty five, twenty six. Our focus on the longer-term financial sustainability, which underscores the importance of ongoing transformation efforts. In terms of the specific committee here, there is an overspend of naught point one million on the budget of thirty six million in total. This position represents strong financial management of the service budgets within this area. Two key areas to pull out here, one is highways network management, which is forecast to have a surplus of naught point nine million. This is offset by overspending planning, as noted in previous meetings. And also within this, as we discussed well, this includes supporting the local plan through the examination phase. Also discussing the paper adopting, adopting a local plan, which is due to be adopted in twenty twenty five, back end from what we've just discussed actually, should have an impact on market confidence and boosting the planning income accordingly. So from my perspective, to kind of sum up, really good that this committee is balanced overall, which does represent strong, strong financial management and we have a regular process in place to manage and track that. The council, notwithstanding, is facing a serious financial pressure and projected overspend. And we are taking immediate actions within the council and that is ongoing and in a longer term transformation will address these issues. Key for this is collaboration across the council. Strategic initiatives under the Future Sheffield Programme are critical in navigating these financial challenges. We're encouraging all departments to continue working closely with finance teams and contribute ideas for cost reductions, demand management and income generation. In closing, thank you for your attention in terms of this update. Happy to take questions or take them away if I can't answer them at this point, but I'll defer them to the appropriate officer.
Thank you Craig and thanks for taking the committee through that. I, I think I'd also like to, to draw committee members' attention to, I think, page forty nine and you've alluded to it already about this, this shift to party-based budgeting that we are going to, to, to have for the twenty twenty four, for twenty twenty four onwards from March. And that's really important, as, as I think you've alluded to, about making sure that we can deliver on all those parties that we've set out for the city in our council plan. So that will involve changes to the way that we make and construct our budget going forward, which is, which is a really positive thing. Can I see whether any colleagues have any questions for Craig with regards to this report? I don't think we do, but Craig, thank you for, for coming today to, to present the report. Of course, we do receive regular budget monitoring from, from your team and we're always very grateful to, to receive it as well. And there's also opportunities outside this space for colleagues to be able to answer or to ask questions about financial matters. But it is important that we shine a light on, on the importance of the finances at this committee meeting. So because there are no particular questions and presumably no points that colleagues would like to debate, I'm going to ask colleagues if we are all agreed to approve this particular item. And the recommendations are on page forty four of your agenda pack. Do I see colleagues in agreement? I can see nodding. Please do raise your hand if you wish to dissent. I can see colleagues, colleagues nodding. So therefore we will approve that particular item. And thank you very much Craig for presenting and taking us through it today. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
That therefore takes us to the next item of our agenda, which is item nine, and that's the local and neighbourhood transport complementary programme and road safety fund programme for twenty twenty four, twenty five. And it's a delivery update that David and Tom are going to run us through today. David and Tom, thank you for coming along.
Thanks Chair, it's, it's always a mouthful, no matter how many times you try and, you try and get your, get your mouth around it. So yeah, you're right, the report provides a high level update on delivery of around eleven million pounds of schemes funded by the local area, sorry, local area enabled transport complementary programme grant and around four million pounds of schemes being delivered through the council's road safety fund. It also highlights some variations within that programme and proposes some new schemes too, and seeks approval to proceed with taking these schemes through the council's capital, in a capital approval process. So just looking very quickly at some of the more significant changes, in terms of road safety, we're, 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 we're keen to include a ninety thousand pound allocation to develop schemes that will be prioritised through the, the vision zero approach. Just as a reminder, that's us moving towards concentrating more on, on sites where we've got a higher proportion of killed and seriously injured collisions, rather than our sites with a higher number of collisions, collisions overall, which, which historically has included slight, slight injury collisions too. Within the pedestrian enhancements and network management area, we're, we're looking at around a four hundred and sixty thousand pound increase on a six point five million programme as cost certainty increases through the, the scheme design process. We've, we've got a programme in this particular area of around about twenty, twenty crossings for, you know, for, for within local communities. And as they've gone through the design process, we have seen, we have seen some increases in prices that reflect more, you know, the, the more detailed nature of the, of the specific sites. Within cycling schemes, we're actually looking at a five hundred thousand pound reduction, although the projects that were identified as, as allocations within the local area enabled transport complementary programme will still be delivered, but through other funding sources. This reduction is enabling us to fund the significant proportion of increased costs within, within the crossing programmes we've just identified, but it also enables us to allocate another eighty seven thousand pounds to expand the residential cycle parking programme following the, the positive feedback that we've had from the, from the trial in the, in the Crooks and Walkley area. Just looking at the road safety fund, we're proposing an increased allocation to the Rother Valley, Rother Valley Parking Scheme, following again, an increase in cost post its, its detailed design and final pricing. Again, this is managed primarily by a change to a, a reduction in allocation for advisory school, their twenty mile, twenty mile an hour zones outside schools. But, but again, this is work that will, will actually happen, but it'll be funded as an appropriate use of, of, of income that's coming through the CAS scheme. So just want to keep, reiterate that that work will happen, it'll just be funded through a different source. So overall, we're expecting to spend around four and a half million pounds on, on local schemes this year with, with around two point eight of the, of the four million road safety fund being spent too. I shall stop at that point, more than happy to take any, any, any questions or comments from the committee.
Thank you very much David for taking us through that. Councillor Merzrow?
Thank you. I've got a few questions. So page sixty three, the traffic management part six camera enforcement of moving traffic offences. It's stated as being in development and wondering where we are with this and when the three trial sites will be implemented and the warning period finished. On page sixty four, there seems to be something missing there. It says costs increase due to, and then the sentence stops. So I'm not sure what that's due to. Page sixty four, I'm wondering if you could tell me what the minor changes are on Holly Street? Page sixty five, I'm wondering what elements are being added to the EV charges scheme and what's been seen to have been beneficial from the trial? My main question is about the Rother Valley Parking Scheme. Can I clarify why this is badged or funded as a road safety scheme rather than as a parking scheme? Because I'm concerned to see that what appears to be a parking scheme has taken up an eighth of the city's entire road safety budget. The costs in June twenty twenty two were two hundred and seventy five thousand, then in December twenty twenty three, it was three hundred and seventy two thousand. Now it's five hundred and thirty two thousand. So the costs have doubled since June twenty twenty two. And I can't see how this is significantly going to improve road safety. I'm wondering also, rather than funding the scheme through the road safety fund, which could be used to fund other road safety schemes, the parking scheme could have been funded through parking services surplus. And that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Merzrow. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you Chair. I've got a few questions and then a, a comment, or I can come back to comment later.
Councillor Shaw, I, I wonder whether, on the basis that you've got a few questions and I know that councillor Merzrow has, has made a number of points across a number of pages, whether actually it would probably be fair for, for me just to go back to David just to, to get some clarification on just the answers for councillor Merzrow and then come back to you. So apologies.
That sounds fair enough Chair.
I'll certainly do the best I can and where I can't, I'll, I'll, I'll say and I'll come back, I'll come back out, as outside of this meeting. And that's certainly the case for the, for the Traffic Management Act, Act part six. I'll have to come back to you with a, a detailed programme. We have had, we have had some positive news recently around, around the procurement process for the cameras. And so we, we are making progress on the project, but in terms of the detail of the, of the programme, I'd have to come back to you on that. In terms of the reference on page sixty four, have you just got the, have you just got the paragraph number? I think there was a bit of text that you said was, was missing, which I apologise for.
Yes, it's the cost of basically the cost of the scheme.
So councillor Merzrow, would you be able to just turn your microphone on so that people watching from home can, can hear?
Apologies. Yeah, on page sixty four, it says that the Calam Island Deep Sun Parking Scheme, that the costs have increased due to, and then the sentence is not finished. So I was wondering what the costs are, what the, what, why the costs have been So I was wondering what the costs are, what the, why the costs have increased.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you for the clarification, yes, so part of the reason that the cost of increase is, is as a result of the complexity of the implementation. So it's taking us, it's taking us, it's longer and we are, we are having to bring in some additional resources around enforcement. And we've had to use tow away powers. And we've had to use those more extensively than we'd initially considered, we'd initially considered within the budget. So that's, it's around, it's around practical implementation of the delivery of that particular project. I think your next point was around, was around Holly Street. There was a couple of very minor changes, one was linked, one was linked to the detail on the sign. One was linked to the location of the, of the push button to enable, to enable the button to be pushed. When you were actually on a bike, as opposed to feeling like you had to get off a bike to then, to then move around to the particular location of where the push button was on the controller. It is, it was a small value, but it was a, it's an important point through the road safety audit to make sure that the scheme, that the scheme can actually be signed off as complete. I made a note about EV, but if I'm honest, I've not made enough notes about EV. So would you mind just repeating, repeating the question specifically on EVs?
Sure, it was on page sixty five, it mentioned that extra elements were being added to the EV charger scheme. And it mentioned that there had been distinct benefits seen already from the trials, so I was wondering what the benefits that you'd seen had been.
That's fine, I'll, I'll have to go back to the PM or the project manager on that one in terms of the detail and come back to you. And shall I, shall I provide an answer through Rachel, so they're included within the notes? Is that, is that okay? And then finally, you were asking a question about, about the Rother Valley Parking Scheme. So my, you know, my, my perception of the road safety fund is it actually covered road safety and accessibility schemes. The original program was, was identified and Tom may be able to help me here. It was round about twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty in discussion, in discussion with lack, with, 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 with lack colleagues. So I think it was, it's, it's always been called the road safety fund, but it does, it did include, it did include accessibility schemes too. I think one of the particular issues obviously within, you know, within, you know, within, within this particular scheme was, you know, that there are issues associated with sightlines of people, of people crossing within, you know, within the area. You know, associated with, with the level of, with the level of parking. But you're right, it is predominantly a parking, a parking management scheme, again particularly associated with, you know, with the fantastic asset that is, that is the Rother Valley Country Park. That in terms of one of your questions, in terms of how, how that potentially could be funded. It's, it's a broader question in terms of, in terms of how we, you know, how we could fund parking schemes, you know, going forward. We're aware obviously that the Calum Neepsend Scheme has been funded, has been funded using grants. But we are having, we are having conversations, albeit with, with Parking Services, who actually reports with a different, with a different committee. In terms of the, whether there are practical ways of how the parking account can be, you know, can be used, you know, to fund these, to fund these schemes in the future. You know, however, that's not without, that's not without, that's not without implications associated with, you know, with funding profiles that they're, they're working to either. So those conversations are occurring because it's, it's a broader conversation around, around delivering future, future schemes similar to Calum Neepsend in the future.
If I could just come in on, on that last point, I think that is an issue that was obviously kind of raised as part of the ongoing kind of development of some of the control parking schemes in the city. So it's, that, that kind of issue has been flagged for a while, so I'd be happy to commit, we come back to committee on a date that we can take you through that knowledge briefing in terms of where we are. If that's okay, Joe.
I think, I think, Tom, that that would be really helpful, I know that it's something that I've been asking colleagues in Parking Services about as well. How we make sure that revenue that is generated from parking schemes goes to support our wider road safety agenda. So it would be good to get a resolution of that particular issue that's raised by Council Merzouga. Now, I appreciate that, I said that we come to councillor Shaw, but I imagine that councillor Horner probably wants to build on some of the points that councillor Merzouga is making about the Rother Valley Parking Scheme. And whilst it is, of course, a parking scheme primarily, it does have road safety elements to it as well. And perhaps we may well, it's a legacy project, but we might have called it something very different nowadays, and it's been some time in development. Councillor Horner.
Thank you, Chair, and first of all, let me thank David and yourself for the briefing yesterday on the Rother Valley Scheme for local members. It is important to say that there is a significant road safety element in this, because this is a roundabout. And one of the roads that comes into it is actually a fair amount of the hill. And the fact that people park all the way around a roundabout is causing road safety issues. And the changes to design to make, make it a through road, two ways, will actually stop it being a roundabout, will, will release space for parking. And also, we hope, will stop the serious problem of boy racers in an evening choosing to use what appears to be a quiet space to belt round a roundabout. Because the new design will narrow everything up to get the parking and so on. So it is more than just a parking scheme, so it's a bit of a misnomer in that sense. I do support this scheme, I hope we can get on with it, because actually, I think I said it in the briefing we had last time. One of the reasons why costs keep rising is because these schemes don't get done. Nearly all the schemes that we tend to do tend to take a long time. And, and basically, the biggest way to stop increases in costs is to get on and do it. And I think we've reached that point now, I think it's about a year, isn't it, Chair, since the committee voted for this scheme to go ahead? And so far, we've had some bushes removed. So I think on behalf of the residents, everybody's now fed up, not just with multiple parking all over the place, but with a scheme that we as councillors have kept saying to people, oh, it's going to happen, it's going to happen in May, it's going to happen in, and now it's going to happen in autumn. I want this scheme to go ahead and I want us to be clear soon that we can say to people, we are going to deliver this. And be certain that we are going to deliver it, because people are fed up hearing that it's going to happen. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horner, for that clarification as well, and I'm pleased that you were able to receive that briefing on it. I know as well from the communication that I've received that it has broad support as well, not least from local members, but also from the local MP Clive Betts as well. Who has also, like you, been making the case for this scheme as well. So thank you for your contribution and clarification about that. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair, and I was, I was, I was happy to give away. So I've got, I think, three questions and a, and a comment, but I'll come to the comment later. So the first question is regarding the twenty mile an hour program, page sixty five. So it's mentioned that the high green twenty mile scheme has, is basically under budget, but those savings are being used to manage pressures on other, other schemes in the program. Firstly, could you just give a, do you have any information about why is it like high, high green in particular is called under budget? And also, these additional pressures in the other programs, will that saving actually be enough? Or are there other further pressures anticipated? And will we have to look at this, this bit of the budget again? My next question is on, was it page sixty six? Regarding the, the VAS program and the rotations, it mentions that the, basically the, the, the the VASs are rotated and they're to download and analyze. I mean, my, my understanding in my, in my role as the South Lake Deputy Chair is the the analysis hasn't actually been possible always and very complete due to delays in rotation, rotating the sites. Because then the dates don't match up, so you can't do a year by year analysis. So has, has that issue been kind of resolved in terms of the delays in rotations? And has there actually been any kind of meaningful analysis of these VAS sites, like across the city? Have they, have they been doing, doing what they, you know, set out to do? And then my, 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 my final question is on the, on the appendix B, so the Abbey Lane Accessibility Scheme. So it's, it says current position has gone back to preliminary design and it's got to get DFT approval for a new Pegasus crossing and things. And, you know, this scheme that's been going on for some time. So the question is, when can we expect it to be progressed again? And how long do we expect it to take to get approval for, for the DFT? And a question to clarify, you know, why do, why do we need the FT approval for this specific, specific crossing? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Shaw, for my clarity, the reference to Abbey Lane and the crossing there, what particular page reference is that one?
Seventy three, Chair.
Page, page seventy three. David and Tom, would you be able to reflect on that? It'd also be perhaps useful just to go through, I know that there are perhaps some changes that have happened with regards to designs of certain schemes with Active Travel England. That might well be some of the reference point here as to having to go back to Active Travel England about the design of certain schemes.
Yes, so thanks, Chair, for taking them in order, again, I'll tell you what I can answer, I'll tell you what I can't. And we'll, and we'll come back to those in terms of some of the detail that I can't. In terms of high, in terms of high green, I think it's probably a more appropriate word to use as, as an allocation rather than budget. So, so when it comes to, when it comes to twenty mile an hour schemes, you know, some of the allocations have tended to be based on similar types of schemes that we've had before. But that, the allocation is derived slightly in advance of the detail around the consultation of what the zone boundary might actually look like. So in, in, in all likelihood, in this instance, it's, it's likely to be that the allocation was greater than it, you know, than it, than it actually needed to, you know, needed to be. We have to start, you know, always have to start, you know, somewhere, and we use previous experience, you know, primarily as that starting point. And then as the scheme develops through its, through each stage of its development, you know, the costings are firmed up at, you know, at each stage. Will there be, in terms of, in terms of the broader pressures within, you know, within the overall, within the overall program? What we're showing here across, across the whole picture, you know, is balanced. Could we, could we need to look at this again in the future? I think that my, my aspiration would really be to, to look at this every three months. I think last year, we just did it once in December, this is after the end of the first six months, basically. So I would, I would hope to try and do something towards the back end of the year and again have a, you know, have a, have a year end summary. Because there's so many moving parts within the program and things are regularly changing, yet, yes, that there may well be some other, other decisions that we may to make in terms of you know, balancing pressures that we don't yet, yet know about in the, in the relatively near future. The VAS rotation question is, is one I don't know the answer to, but I will, I will ask, ask my, my colleague to, again, to either come back to you direct. Or we can do it through, we can, we can put some information in through, through, through Rachel in, in terms of the notes. In terms of Abbey Lane, my, you know, my understanding is, is that all Pegasus crossings require, require DFT or Department for, Department for Transport approval. Which, which if I'm honest, came as, was a learning point for me, which is, which is great. We, this, this, in terms of this particular scheme, it's not actually as a result of Active Travel England's input that, that has taken us, taken us back a stage. It, it was as a, it was as a result of the local, you know, the local community engagement that, you know, that, that asked us to, you know, to look, to do things, you know, slightly differently. Not only is it local community involvement, we've obviously got some, you know, some sensitive nature areas, you know, that are directly, directly affected by the site, including obviously, including obviously Eccles or Woods. I know my, my, my colleague within the team is regularly keeping, you know, local councillors up to date in terms of, in terms of what's, in terms of what's happening. She's, she's providing a monthly update, so even if there's nothing to report, we're making sure that local members are aware that there's, that there's nothing to report. In terms of the detail of the program, again, that is something that I'd have to, I'd have to come back to you, I'd have to come back to you separately.
Thank you, David, and thank you for offering to come back on some of those points to add even greater clarity for councillor Shaw and the committee. Councillor Diamond.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, thank you very much to David and Tom for the, the reports that we've, we've heard today in the presentation. Just one comment is that I was a bit disappointed that there is a reduction in expenditure for the cycling schemes. And I felt that they maybe could be reallocated to other cycling projects, including expanding the residential cycling scheme further. I would encourage any local people, residents watching that, you know, if they want to have a secure cycle parking near their house, that they should get in touch with their ward members. Because it's something that we need to expand if we're going to make the cycle network viable. And this is relevant to the next, the next part of the agenda as well. But also a question on the double yellow lines. I think in order for these, the W L lines to be successful, we need also to have effective enforcement. And I think one of the issues of complacency residents with, in terms of the Neepsend scheme is about enforcement there. So just wondering if we're having conversations with Parking Services and if there's a plan to ensure that the new W L lines would be properly resourced and enforced.
So it's, it's a point that I know councillor Merzouga has made, you know, made previously before, and it's, it's, it's an absolutely valid point. Within, within the, within the larger schemes such as, such as Calum Neepsend, the business case includes a cost and a value for, you know, for additional enforcement, which would, which would be, which would be paid for by the income associated with either the permit costs or the, you know, or the pay and display income. It's, it's, you know, it's important that we, we ensure that the first call on any income is, is on the administration and enforcement of the, of those, of those schemes. So, so for the, for the, you know, for the larger, for the larger schemes, yes, there is that, you know, there is that, there is that direct link. Once the scheme is fully in place and fully enforceable. And I think that's part of the, the issue, the issue that we've got at, at Calum and Neepsend at the minute. In terms of the, in terms of the, the smaller program that's included in here in terms of, in terms of, in terms of double yellows. It, it doesn't currently include for additional enforcement of what could be a very large number of sites of very small lengths of, you know, of double yellow, of double yellow lines. So, so Parking Services would, would, would use their existing resources, but I think it's important to highlight that, that, you know, that Parking Services have, you know, have, have advertised information on our website, whether if people feel that there's enforcement needed, that they would, if they get in touch with Parking Services, Parking, from my experience, they've been, they, 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 they can be very responsive in terms of going out and, you know, and tackling with, tackling with, you know, immediate needs, particularly if they've obviously got resources already in that, in that area or available to go out and help with, you know, help with immediate pressures.
Sorry, Chair, just on the other point, the other question around kind of cycle hangers. We are preparing at the moment some, some comms and updating websites to make sure that the kind of awareness of the opportunity around cycle hangers is, is, is kind of, you know, bigger. And the routes to kind of suggesting locations for potential sites is, is a bit easier as well. So absolutely, people can come to their local ward members, but that broader awareness and direct information into the team is something that we're preparing at the moment and will hopefully come forward quite soon.
Thank you, Tom, for clarifying, and I would certainly agree with that, that point about the importance of cycle hangers. We know as a committee, we are ambitious about wanting to deliver more cycle hangers to those people who don't have easy access to store their bikes at home. Perhaps they don't have a garage or storage space. And I've certainly been clear in my communication that we need to democratize that, we need to have an opportunity for people to be able to submit requests that might be appropriate. We know that, for example, if you live on a street that might be particularly hilly, it might be very difficult to cite a cycle hanging. But we need to have an ability for people to be able to submit those requests. Obviously, we do know that we're limited by resources and particularly finance. Obviously, we do know that we're limited by resources and particularly financing for many of these projects. But people across this committee, I think, do support providing that infrastructure for people to be able to have their bikes outside their homes so that they can make some really good choices about how they travel. I did have, I think councillor Sanger, and I think then perhaps councillor Shaw, councillor Sanger.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the officers. I mean, this is a very comprehensive report about lots of very important schemes. I'm just still, after all these years, trying to get my head around timing and how long the process takes. So I'm really going to use three examples. Firstly, the River Valley Country Park scheme, which is really important. Really important that it is moving forward. We acknowledge it's going to be more expensive than before, but it's really important, it's really key that it happens and we are able to put time on it. The second one is Abbey Lane, which local members have been asking for for at least seven years. And the fact it has to go back to the DFT at this stage is frustrating. I know we've got to get it right for the community and it's a crossing that is there for destination reasons. And generally, it's not just a local community crossing. So I accept that there has to be that wide consultation, but we do seem to be going round and round for a long time. A third one, really welcome the contribution to the Redmires Road speed reduction. And it's taken us seven years to get to this stage and we're not implemented yet. And I'm really hoping that this, coupled with the implementation of the forward road twenty mile per hour, which once again was promised by a cabinet member in an answer to a question in 2019, that it was happening within the next council year. You say, you know, the work is going to start this autumn. But the combination of those two schemes will mean that we will have real reduction in terms of accidents and near misses at the Redmires Road, Blackbrook Road, Lodge Lane, crossroads, where we continue to get accidents and near misses and sooner or later we will have serious injuries. Bicycle and motorbikes are affected. So really keen that it's going to happen. Really welcome using that extra money for the Redmires Road. But I just think that members, not just of this committee, need greater clarity on timescales of when a petition comes to the council and now the Chair of this committee says, let's take it away and work it up. To be able to say, well, this is going to be a two-year process or a four-year process or a six-year process, or to accept that it's really difficult in these circumstances and it's going to be ten plus years. I just think we need a bit of clarity. Those are three examples where really important local schemes are going ahead. Members are very, local members are supportive, but members have felt that the timescale was dragged on. And I just wish we could be a little bit more honest about timescales and then a bit more proactive about being imaginative about seeing if there are shortcuts so that we can respond to community need in a more timely fashion. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Tom, would it be okay to ask you just to reflect on those points? I know that there's quite a considerable amount of work across your team, but also the Capital Delivery Service on the overall transport programme as well. And improvements have played there. But I think councillor Sanger made some really legitimate points about kind of expectation management, I guess. And we as politicians probably also have to reflect on that as well. Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I kind of hear all the points you make in there councillor Sanger. And as Chair says, we have been looking at our programme position since the turn of the year in terms of the way in which we currently manage our overall programme, in terms of some of the resources that are required to kind of improve our performance around some of this. And, you know, the kind of data flow and understanding at a specific project level, how that feeds across the wider programme. So that's an ongoing process of kind of improvement. So there are further measures that we're going to be taking to kind of bring more resource in to support our delivery, which are essential. And I'm sure you'll be aware of the kind of, the wider kind of scale and uplift in terms of our transport programme over the last few years, which is a fantastic thing for us as a city and as a region and more broadly, that kind of investment in transport projects is seen as one of those kind of essential areas to deal with many outcomes, as we've highlighted through our transport vision. We hope that that will be continued. One of the challenges is the consistency of the funding and funding windows. The market, you know, the resources of engineers, of transport planners is light and demand is high. So, you know, I think at times we probably are a little over optimistic in terms of how we can move things forward at pace. So that's something, again, that we will need to reflect on and manage back. And I think kind of providing you with a clearer understanding early about where we are in relation to certain requests is something that we'll certainly take away. The demand for, as you well know, for transport requests is always significant. So there may well be, and Abbey Lane is a classic case, that there's been a desire for something to be done for a number of years for legitimate reasons. But as a demand and the funding that we have across the city, whilst funding has gone up, those demands never reduce. So we do have to prioritise where we invest funding and we try and do that in a transparent way and we work with you on those policies. One of the areas there is that, you know, that kind of desire to do something will probably be in place before we've got funding secured. And that's really when the resources then kick in to move things on. And naturally, as schemes do evolve, there will be circumstances where, through, for example, Abbey Lane, you know, we have engagements with local members, local key stakeholders to define a project. But at wider consultation, there are some legitimate issues that are raised. So, you know, sometimes we do have to, for the right reasons, reflect, review and maybe repurpose some of our proposals. So that can kind of sometimes be unforeseen or not expected given kind of earlier engagement. So we do need to be responsible, you know, to get the best out of the scheme that ultimately will be delivered. And in that case, we certainly will be taking forward a scheme of improvements which hopefully have that legacy and that longstanding benefit. So I take on board your points and there are a number of factors, I think, that potentially gets us to that place. But hopefully, some of the work we are doing at the moment and some further reflection, ongoing reflection and review, I think we'll probably get to a much better place.
Thank you, Tom. And you've talked about bringing in more resource to support delivery. I think on reflection, it would probably be a good opportunity at some of our briefings outside of these committee meetings first to expand on that so that we are able to bring committee members even more up to speed about it. I think that would be really, really useful. I think I also saw councillor Shaw indicating. That's absolutely fine. We can move into that space, councillor Shaw, if you'd like to make a wider comment.
Thank you, Chair. So relating to the residential cycle scheme, which, cycle parking scheme, which, yeah, I very much, very much welcome. It's important and that we do try to increase storage for residents across the city, even if the limitations of the hangers needing level ground kind of limits their availability geographically, let's say. And I'd like to kind of just highlight or, you know, reiterate the importance of also providing parking at destinations. You can have as much storage at home as you like for as many cycles as you want. But if there's nowhere that you want to go that has somewhere for you to lock up your bike, there's no point. So, you know, whether that's like local shopping centres, schools, what, you know, areas of workplaces, public buildings with council or other public buildings. So I think it's important that we have some kind of, you know, gap analysis, as it were, in terms of where provision is lacking. I know a few years ago, I asked several questions in full council about the availability or lack of availability of parking, cycle parking at housing offices. And frankly, I think it's basically half of housing offices didn't have facilities for either their staff or members of the public to use or were only usable by staff members. So going forward, it's, I think, that's something that should be developed so that, you know, either ourselves or through the laps, we have kind of a hit list of locations that need additional capacity so that, you know, people now that they have, you know, parking at home for those bikes have somewhere to go. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Shaw, for your reflections on that. I appreciate that you simply wanted to make a comment about it. But I think David would like to perhaps come back, if that's okay, David.
Yeah, really welcome your interest and really welcome, you know, the desire to work with you in terms of where those cycle parking facilities could be. What I did want to say though is that through the local area neighbourhood transport complimentary programme, we do already have a cycling small schemes programme where, which includes, you know, cycle parking across the city. The specific reason for identifying the residential cycle parking stuff within the report was it's in addition to what we're already doing. But that's not to say that we can't improve on what we're already doing and clearly welcome, you know, member involvement in terms of how we can do that going forward.
Thank you, David, and thank you councillor Shaw. Do I see any other member wishing to ask a question or to discuss this further? I don't. Thank you, David and Tom, for running us through and presenting that report. The recommendations are on page fifty-seven of our report pack. And can I ask if we are all agreed? If members wish to dissent, then please raise your hand. Have we got any nodding from colleagues? Yes, vigorous nodding, yes, absolutely, thank you. And I've got no members wishing to dissent, so therefore that item has been carried. It has been approved. So thank you very much, David and Tom, for presenting that report on the local and neighbourhood transport complimentary programme and road safety fund programme, which is certainly a mouthful, isn't it? Therefore, we'll move on to our final item of our agenda today, which will be presented, I think, by Ruth and Alan. And it's item ten, it's Attic Cliff Regeneration Framework Progress Update today. And that is in our agenda pack and it starts on page seventy-five with the recommendations on page seventy-seven. And I think Ruth and Alan, you were going to kind of run us through it and give a bit of a spotlight to some of the amazing work that is happening at the moment in Attic Cliff.
Yes, that's correct. Can you all hear? I've got a presentation, as you can see, from the committee report, it's between seventy-five and ninety. Thankfully, you'll be glad to know I'm not going to read it all out. So I've got a quick counter through with the presentation. So this report provides, so next page, please. This report provides a progress report on the local growth programme for Attic Cliff and it also provides an update on Attic Cliff Waterside and the new proposed regeneration framework. So we've got the National Centre for Child Health and Technology. It's proposed that the Sheffield Children's NHS Foundation Trust will develop the NCC HT itself and Sheffield City Council will enter into an agreement for a lease directly with the trust. Scarborough Group have confirmed that this would be acceptable to them and this revised proposal was agreed at Finance Committee in July this year. The trust has been successful in securing grant funding and other contributions hence it's become more logical and cost effective for the trust to take full control of developing the facility itself. This will reduce revenue costs and make the facility more financially viable. Provided that acceptable costs can be agreed, it's intended to start in the site in December twenty-four with the facility opening in early twenty-twenty-six. And this will satisfy the requirements of the local growth programme timetable for Attic Cliff and the SIMCA grants. Next page, please. These are just two photographs of where the site is, if anyone's unsure of the location. Next slide, and this is a CGI of the proposed development. Thank you. So that's directly opposite the Adelphi, which will, the former Adelphi Cinema, which we'll come on to later. So connectivity and movement. The funding dedicated in the local growth programmes has been allocated to support the enhancement of connecting Sheffield, the Darnell and Attic Cliff TCF as it's known. And this will include a segregated cycle route through Attic Cliff High Street. And the public rail uplift will include pedestrian routes from the Attic Cliff tram stop. Right Side Lane Bridge is a redundant roadway bridge which is proposed for removal. This will enable HGVs that do not require access to the High Street to utilise another route. A workshop was held in June twenty-twenty-four with local businesses requiring HGV access. And the information gathered from this session will now contribute to the constraints input for the scoping, the potential options and ensure that the access to these businesses is unfettered. The project's in a detailed design development stage and is due to be finished by about September twenty-twenty-four. This proposed timeframe has affected the design work completion and it's put the site commencement back to early twenty-twenty-five. And this is dependent on the approvals from the SIMCA. Next page, please. Car park improvements. So there's five car parks across Attic Cliff that have been identified for improvements. These are underutilised and have been identified by as unattractive places to park. So the work proposed to the car parks includes the installation of CCTV, resurfacing, clearance of vegetation, lighting, et cetera. And as you can see, the full programme is set off below. Zion Lane has already commenced in August and Kimberley Street's just started on site as well. Next slide, please. The slides are just showing Zion Car Park that's on site. Next slide, please. Cycle Hub. Original funding bid included a proposal to erect a new building to provide a cycle hub for users and visitors to the Sheffield Olympic Legacy Park. However, the site proposed for this has proven to be too difficult to develop. So negotiations with Scarborough Group to acquire a lease of a unit within the community stadium as an alternative are ongoing due to issues with finding inappropriate premises. The previously identified location for the hub wasn't viable due to the infrastructure and alternative options were undeliverable due to capital funding constraints to resolve this. So further options for the third-party delivery of the project are currently being explored by S C C. Next slide, please. Attic Cliff Aqueduct Improvements. So there's been three phases to the works in the aqueduct on Works Off Road. The first phase is to address dripping from the underside of the arches. That sounds quite simple, but it was quite complicated, which I'll not go into, which is mentioned in the report. And that was completed in July twenty-twenty-four. We're currently getting towards the end of phase two. People may have noticed as they've gone through the area that the road was closed during the summer holidays and there was a T R O while the aqueduct was scaffolded and repointed and the graffiti was removed and the railings have been improved. We're now moving on to the last section where the lighting's being put into the footway to try and help particularly schoolchildren go into the Oasis Academy. Third phase is just being scoped at the minute for adding some heritage interpretation at the site in conjunction with the Canal and River Tost. And we're just working through that at the moment. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is a before and after. On the left-hand side is the before and you can see that it's been repointed and it's looking much happier as you approach it from the Darnell end of Works Off Road. I didn't share pictures of the previous dripping. I thought you could use your imagination. Next slide, please. The Innovation Centre Preparatory Works. So funding for the local growth programme has been used to reclaim contaminated land, which is currently unusable and is fenced off from public access. This is adjacent to the Sheffield Bowl and the site's intended for the Scarborough Group to build and open an innovation centre as part of the Sheffield Olympic Legacy Park. So all the vegetation's already been removed to do topographical surveys and ground intrusive surveys. All this has taken quite a long time to analyse the soil surveys. This has been completed and reviewed and there's been a much higher level of land contamination without going into the details of asbestos. Without going into the details of asbestos, there's a lot of the really badass asbestos in it. So that's resulted in a longer development of the options, and the costings have increased. So we're doing an options appraisal at the moment to see what we can deliver within the outlined business case budget that we had looked at before. Next slide, please. Just to get an idea of where this mine of contaminated land is, these photographs were taken when the bowl was in use for the music circus. Music festival and circus. And it has to be Harris fans staff when they put those on. And it's quite an unattractive area when you come off the tram. Next slide, please. Onto trams. Tram stops. Part of the programme is to improve tram stops to both Attic Cliff and the arena stops. And that was delivered through SIMCA. And a grant agreement was in place, and funding's been passed to the delivery team. So the uplift in the tram stops at Attic Cliff and O L P commenced in January, and these were completed in June. So I don't know whether anyone's noticed that we've got new tram stops. All the areas being improved, shelters, information boards. And a request was also made to change the name to Arena for Olympic Legacy Park, and this has been completed too. I didn't think you needed a photograph of the tram stop, so I haven't given you one. So we'll move on to Adelphi Square, please. So the purchase of the former Adelphi Cinema was completed in March twenty-twenty-three. This key intervention is to repurpose and refurbish the Adelphi at Attic Cliff as a community-focused cultural building, and this has been funded through the local growth programme. We're currently drafting up a lockout agreement with the potential end operators. And design development's ongoing for phase one works, which are focusing on the building's envelope, the demolition of non-original structures that are detrimental to the building condition. This envelope-ing series of works has commenced to prevent watering grass and further damage to the building, and this is due to start later this year. So next slide, please. In case anyone doesn't know what the Adelphi looks like, here's a view from the Olympic Legacy Park to the right, which includes the former Burton's Building, and to the left is from Vicarage Road. Next slide, please. This is the piece of land to the side of the property that fronts on to the high street, and it's usually the elevation that most people see. Next slide, please. Attic Cliff Area Board. So to support the wider regeneration of Attic Cliff, along with the delivery of the current and future projects, Attic Cliff Area Board has been established. It's chaired by the MP, Clive Betts, and its membership includes representatives from the local businesses, councillors, partners and groups, and then supported by council officers. The group's primary focus is as a collaborative forum to coordinate and develop the vision for the area and allow more informed decisions by its members. I'm just going to put another mention in here, which is two-one-two, which is on page eighty-five. I haven't got a slide in for this one, so I'll just run through it quickly. So this is about the regeneration framework, about the document draft consultation. So Attic Cliff had an area action plan document which was dated between twenty-twelve, twenty-twenty-one, so it's quite out of date now. And it was the former development guidance document, which had aspirational vision for the regeneration of the area. And so it requires a new document to encapsulate the development that has occurred in the area over the past ten, fifteen years, and the potential sites suitable for new housing. So the first phase to rewrite the document has been funded by Homes England, and this was supported by the Attic Cliff Area Board in principle. So W S P consultants were appointed in December twenty-twenty-three to commence this new regeneration framework document. So a draft executive summary has been shared with Attic Cliff Area Board, and the final full draft has just been received towards the end of August with ourselves. So this month, we're commencing an internal consultation with departments that we involved when we were starting to write the document. So for instance, Transport, Colleagues, Development Management, et cetera. And following these responses, we'll amend it, and we're looking to establish a timetable and a plan for phase two. Phase two will also need to be funded by Homes England, and we're currently awaiting agreement through their finance board. And we'll bring the full draft consultation back to the committee with the timetable after the external consultation is carried out. Can we go on to, just leave it on that one, thank you. Attic Cliff Waterside. So Situ is the councillor's development partner, and they've secured planning permission for phase one. So some of you may have seen that planning application to comprise of three hundred and sixty-two new homes and a variety of commercial uses within the existing buildings along Attic Cliff Road with a new pedestrian bridge over the canal and pedestrian cycle bridge over the canal, which are linked to the future phases. Delivery is dependent on further grant from SIMCA's Brianfield Housing Fund, and the combined authority will consider it yesterday. We haven't had the outcome as yet. So if Situ's funding bid's successful, the first task on site will be the archaeological investigations, works to the existing canal wall, which isn't quite in perfect state, and also to the exterior of the retained buildings. They're planned to take place in the remainder of twenty-twenty-four, with piling for the new homes to commence in spring twenty-twenty-five. Next slides, please. We've got some CGI visuals of the proposed scheme from Attic Cliff Road, Attic Cliff High Street. So if you see on the left, the existing buildings are in the centre with striped red and yellow. And you can see the proposal, and also to the left of that photograph, of the drawing. The second one on the right shows the canal bridge. And if we move on to the third one, next page, please. It shows a longer range view from the high street. Next page. And the recommendations, Chair, or denote the progress made on the Attic Cliff regeneration projects. So the presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth, for taking us through that report. It's very much appreciated, and some of the pictures really do look particularly impressive. Committee members will see the pictures that you put up on screen at the very end of Attic Cliff Waterside, which looks very, very exciting, doesn't it? Nine hundred and fifty new homes around that, that is really going to transform the area. And I guess it illustrates, doesn't it, just the importance of the work that we're doing that is around that new housing development as well? You know, the work that you've already shone a light on about Adelphi Square, the beautiful grade-two listed building that's in council ownership that we have got two operators for and that we will be working to construct internally over the coming months. But also some of that wider enabling work as well, that actually we shouldn't downplay the significance of. You talked very much about the aqueducts there and the importance of it to provide safe routes for young people going to the U T C that's down there, a very successful school, but also Oasis Academy, because we do want to give people more choice in how they travel around our city. And that really nice work as well about making sure that the tram stops are upgraded. And that was one of those points that was made by committee members earlier on in our meeting about making sure that there's investment in infrastructure. If more people are going to be living in Attic Cliff Waterside, more people are going to be working around there, then we also need to make sure that the infrastructure is of very good quality. Now, do colleagues have any questions or comments that they would like to make today? And Councilor Diamond.
Yes, thank you, Ruth and Alan, for the report. I think it's really exciting, the progress that's happening in Attic Cliff. The report is very welcome that the Sheffield Children's Hospital Trust is doing that work directly rather by the Scarborough Group. I think that's very welcome. Just wondering on that issue, like, how much inflationary costs have increased? And is this any risk to the scheme? And does the council have any exposure to increasing costs for these? Or do we met the trust? Do you want to answer, ask all my questions or?
Yes, if that's okay, Councilor Diamond. So you've asked that question about inflationary costs, and you've also made that reflection, I guess, about the change of delivery model for the Child Centre for Health Technology. But there was something else, I think.
Yeah, so I've got a few questions in terms of the connectivity and movement aspect. I think, again, as we've spoken about earlier in the committee, we have spent quite a bit of money on car parks here, but without that improved enforcement, how will we ensure that people use the car parks that we're investing in? And then also a bit concerned about the lack of progress on the cycle hub. I think, again, it's really welcome, the segregated cycle routes, but as we also talked about earlier, it's really important that people have cycle parking both at home and at their destinations. So is there going to be cycle parking both at the new trust building, the Adelphi, and probably really vital as well that there is secure cycle parking at Attic Cliff Waterside for the residents there? Some of the report refers to dates that are in the past as something that will happen. Can we assume that everything that we've said will happen on a date that's gone has already happened or in progress, or is there anything that's been delayed? And I think there's just one typo that I want to bring out at the end of the report. It said, when referring to the initial climate impact assessment, there's a sentence where it says, it's right at the end, just, is it page eighty-nine? It says, encourage active travel and minimise public transport use. But I'm guessing that's not what we meant there. That's on page ninety, sorry. So it's just right at the end. So just if we could correct that typo.
Thank you, Councilor Diamond. Hopefully, we can change that to maximise rather than minimise. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's an easy mistake to make, isn't it? Ruth and Alan, is it okay to have your reflections on those points?
Yeah, I'll try and answer most of those points. In terms of the costs on N C C H T, part of what we're doing here is we're using the money we've been awarded for Attic Cliff to part fund that. SIMCA are bringing some money to part from the rest of it, and the Children's Trust are bringing some of their own balance to it. Our costs in SIMCA costs are largely fixed, and any movement from now on in is kind of like being borne at risk by the Children's Trust. I'd not say we might not be able to vary it, but most of the burden in delivering this now lies with the trust. Our budget is largely fixed, but it's also been, it's within a deliverable envelope now. They're through design stages to the point that there has been cost inflation, but this is now a deliverable scheme with a start on site in December. So that's the first point. In terms of the connectivity and movement and the car parks, I think you make some really good points. I think we've tried to address this before committee about why we're doing the improvements to the car parks, and there's two issues there. One, it's about antisocial behaviour, as well as, you know, it's not just about improving the car parks for car park use. It's about discouraging some antisocial behaviour that's taking place in those places, and also to try and remove the excuse to fly park around the area. There's an awful lot of fly parking, parking on pavements, and restrictions to people's movement in there that if we've got more attractive car parks to be used with CCTV, hopefully we can reduce that particular problem. So that's the answer to why we're doing those works. In terms of the cycle hub, this has just proved really difficult to find a solution to do this. I think what I would say is we will keep trying. There comes a point where we might not be able to deliver this, but it's also worth bearing in mind that this cycle provision, it was an interim measure in advance of the building out of the Sheffield Olympic Legacy Park. If we get, as part of the proposals for the wider Sheffield Olympic Legacy Park, there will be a new transport hub with cycle provisions part to that. So this was only ever an interim measure. So whilst it's disappointing, I think, and we will still do our very best to deliver it, we are not going to deliver cycle improvements in the area.
To come back on that point, just whether you had considered looking at putting cycling in the car parks that you're improving, because obviously they can be covered by CCTV. They're already there, we own them.
I think that's a really good suggestion, and at the very least, what we could try to do is try to put some cycle stands in those car parks.
And thank you very much, Alan. I've got Councilor Merzrow and then Councilor Shaw, I think. Councilor Merzrow.
Yeah, it was also about cycle parking, and it was to request that there's proper cycle parking put in next to the tram stops as well, because it's a really good opportunity for people to be able to use multimodal transport in order to get across the city. And there's a distinct lack of cycle parking at tram stops at the moment, so could that be included as well?
I can pick that up with SIMCA colleagues. We've done the improvements that we can, the tram stop improvements or programme is finished. So that would have to be a future programme to be funded from somewhere else at some point. But I'll take the point back to SIMCA colleagues and make it to them.
And just add to that, Councilor Merzrow as well, I think you make a really important point about that kind of shift between, that modal shift between kind of cycling and trams. And I know that SIMCA colleagues are currently investigating and will be bringing forward a piece of work about bikes on trams. I know that many of us do feel quite passionately about that. Clearly, it has to be part of a study perhaps into this, but I know that tram networks across the country have investigated and got some solutions to how we make sure that bikes can be part of the tram network as well, so that people can make that switch more easily. Because whilst it's, you know, very good and very laudable to make sure that people can park their bike up at the tram stop, actually, we want people to be able to use it to add to their journey as well, to take that bike on the tram, if at all possible. Councilor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. I think several members have already preempted my comments about enabling multimodal journeys and extending the range of journeys, so I'll skip that comment. So I've a few questions about the railway bridge, so page eighty, so Brightside Lane Bridge. So just to clarify, this is the bridge of where Brightside Lane meets Meadow Hall Road, not the other one, because there are two. Yes, so just clarifying which bridge we're talking about. So why have Network Rail not agreed to fund the removal of the bridge is my first question. And then what will happen to the bridge deck itself after it's removed? Will the council have to pay for it to be stored somewhere? Or will, or can it be offered to, for example, you know, one of the many heritage railways in the region? Or will it be retained by Network Rail for them to dispose of? Or, you know, will it be Network Rail who do the removal, even if, say, the council pays for it? Would you just offer some clarity on those, please?
We're waiting costings currently on that, so I don't quite know the full details of it, but I can certainly feed back to you once I know them. We're just waiting the details that are being, it probably will be done by Network Rail, and we will be paying them to do that.
I don't know why Network Rail aren't paying to remove it, but where we are with this and having the funding available, it's a really important thing for stakeholders in the area. And to make our plans for the TCF improvements to work, we need an alternative route for HGVs, so it's critical to what we're delivering to get it removed. I'll go back and find out why Network Rail aren't paying for its removal. Maybe that's something we can look at in the future, but it's still really important that we remove the bridge to make the area work better.
There's no risk of them wanting it back at some point in the future, is there?
No, because the route's gone, it's a disused railway bridge. The bridge is just in the way.
So it creates a height restriction basically for HTVs.
And Alan and Ruth, would you be able to just add a little bit of additional clarity on to that about why that is so important, the removal of that bridge? You've kind of alluded to it already for, to enable people to have more choice about how they travel on some of those busier routes. But what are we seeking to do there really? And particularly, I guess, we're talking about active travel infrastructure, aren't we?
Critically, in terms of what we're doing through the High Street and through the Darnolds, Addercliff to City Centre route and the improvements on the High Street, is about improving walking, cycling and other movements through the main centre of Addercliff. That is currently blighted by HTVs running through the area that don't have another route because of the height restriction on the alternative route. So removing the bridge allows us to take the HTVs out of Addercliff High Street. That's the critical point.
From both directions, so both north and south at the minute. There's been surveys done, it's huge numbers. It's the highest number to HTVs along A roads.
Councilor Shaw.
Thank you. So once that alternative route is provided, how will it be enforced? That, you know, only people needing to access Addercliff High Street can take their HTVs there?
The workshop that was referred to in the report has been a consultation with local businesses there to look at how we allow access for businesses that still need HTV access, whilst we bring in the measures to ban HTVs travelling through. I'd have to rely on transport colleagues to tell you what the particular mechanism is for achieving that ban, but that's the intention.
Well, they haven't decided yet because there's various options, as I said. It's been, they're being put, so we've taken the feedback from the workshop. And at the minute, they're feeding that into looking at those options and what costs those were. So it was about gathering information from the people that use it. It was a really great workshop, we had loads of buying from it and loads of interest in it. And going back to the car parks, they had a lot of trouble with their HTVs going to their businesses with blocked cars and fly, you know, cars with LED being parked blocking their businesses as well. So it was about looking at all the different ways to try and unlock that reduction along the High Street. The road will also be downgraded as part of that as well. So if it's downgraded to B road, it'll also help when you put it into sat nav to reduce that direction so that people will automatically in HTVs be directed down a different route.
Thank you on that, because I just know there are a number of HTV restricted roads in the city where it's not always strictly enforced. And HTVs, you know, use them like outside of hours because of the difficulty of establishing sure whether or not that HTV has stopped for a moment to service a location or not en route.
Objection of the TCF to reduce the road speed limits as well, which would be another discouraging factor, and to reduce the HTVs too.
Thank you, Councilor Shaw, for those questions and the answers, Ruth and Alan. Councilor Midler, I think you indicated that you'd like to ask a question on my contribution.
Thank you, Chair, yes. I was really pleased to see how heritage is integrated into the Addercliff Waterside initiative. I think it's great that as well as the Adelphi, which is a fabulous building, we've also got the Blue Heritage of the canals being celebrated as well. I noticed that you say that phase three will be looking at heritage interpretation and noting that at the moment, there's no real sort of interpretation or signposting or anything about that. I think that's really important that we have that in place. I was wondering if, when you get to that stage, if you've considered perhaps working closely with heritage groups such as, you know, perhaps the Canals and River Trust. Well, there we are. And local bodies who have got so much knowledge and also have access to other funding streams as well. So that, because I noticed that you said it would need a further grant for that. So I think, you know, it's great that that's going to happen. And it would be great to really involve local groups who have so much knowledge about this in the interpretation, if that was at all possible. Thank you, Chair.
Shall I just answer that? So just a bit of clarity, in phase one, we granted the Canal and River Trust because we don't actually own the aqueduct, it's owned by the Canal and River Trust. So phase one, we granted that. And so phase three, when we mentioned the grant, it would be that we would be granting and having a grant agreement with the Canal and River Trust to put the heritage interpretation there. We're just scoping that at the minute because we were ensuring that phase two hadn't cut into any of the contingency funding. So if that had cut into, that was dependent on how much money we had left for the heritage interpretation. So we're nearly there, so we should be starting to do that soon. So if you're interested in it, I'll certainly keep you involved, John. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think it would be good if the team would liaise with Councilor Midler as the council's heritage champion on the project going forward. Clearly a lot of very exciting heritage aspects to the scheme, not least the Adelphi Cinema Conversion, but also all sorts of other exciting things at Addercliff Waterside as well. So thank you. Do I have any other colleagues who wish to make a contribution? Councilor Diamond.
Apologies, Chair, there's just a few questions that I did want to ask and then a bit of follow up on the points that Councilor Shaw was making. Just on the membership of the board, are there any local residents who are represented on the board? Or is it, or is any plans to include local residents? Then another question was, because we've had a lot of investment in the tram shelters, is there any improvements to bus infrastructure like bus shelters? We've talked about that earlier on in the committee, which may have been, because it's obviously a really important route for buses as well. And then my last question is really a question to the Chair. Just on the fact that Network Rail are refusing to pay for this. And, you know, we have budget pressures of 34 million. Could we not be making representations to the Secretary of State, asking that Network Rail does pick up that? Maybe we could write as a committee.
I'll let Ruth and Alan pick up those points and then I'll address the point that I think Alexi has made with regards to making representations to H and G.
In terms of the board makeup, that spread of people there, it's similar to what we've done with other Loth projects. So the board's been established and there is a wider stakeholder group to get the feed into membership to that board. So there isn't directly resident representation on it. But there are resident representations on the wider stakeholder group and there's local councillors on the board representing some of those local residents. Part of the problem we have in Addercliff is we haven't got a vast majority of residents at the minute. It's about bringing people back into Addercliff as part of what we're trying to do. But there are, there's representatives in the wider stakeholder group of those residents through.
And there are all the ward councillors on the board?
The representative tends to be Mary Lee.
And also we've got representatives of the Addercliff business community as well. So that's very well represented and there's a stakeholder group there. There's only 300 residents within the Addercliff area at the moment. So it's certainly something that we do want to involve.
Would you consider widening the membership of the board? So all of the local, you know, the cross party representation on it?
The representatives on the board are duty bound to go back and report back to those stakeholder groups to keep them informed. So they've been selected from the wider stakeholder group, but they don't come as their own individual representatives. They come as representatives of the wider stakeholder group.
I think it's probably important to also highlight that the model of governance that we have in place in Addercliff is very akin to what we also have in Castle Gate as well, where councillor Johnson, as I understand it, is the representative of residents in the area in Castle Gate and is able to perform that function. It also models a similar makeup that we also have, albeit with a different pot of funding in Stocksbridge and a more, a different board for Parkwood and Springs that's very much in its infancy as well. So this model of working is established across the city with regards to councils representing residents in that area. I think Council Diamond makes a really important point about how do we make the wider case to government for various different pieces of work that we have. And it's a very legitimate, right point to make. I think it's one of those things that we do need to ask for officer advice outside this space because there are lots of asks that we quite rightly are making of government, that those need to be timed appropriately to the decision points that government have and particularly various different spending reviews. And they also need to be timed in accordance with lots of other asks that we have. So for example, we know that we are making lots of asks at the moment about lots of different transport schemes and we're getting in touch with government on that. And also about different regen schemes as well, so it has to be correctly timed. So I think the most appropriate course of action there would be to ask for advice from officers and to take that advice at one of our briefings that we have after this meeting as well. Alan.
Ruth, just to say, to finish off, just to pick up your point, your point around bus stop improvements, that's part of the transforming city fund improvements through Addercliff.
Superb. Are there any other colleagues who wish to make a contribution? I don't think so. Well, Ruth and Alan, thank you for presenting the report and taking us through it. And in particular, the pictures that you've been able to put on the screen as well, which really do bring many of the different projects to life. It shows the value of having pictures like this. Because however good the words are on the page, actually having pictures that we can use to explain to residents and developers and people right across the city about what we're doing really helps bring things to life. Now, page 75 of the agenda pack is where this report is. But the report contains recommendations that are for our approval if the committee wishes on page 77. Can I ask whether the committee is agreed? And if any member wishes to dissent, then please do raise your hand. And I'd ask committee members to nod if they are in favour, so that I can, I can understand. So it looks like committee members are very much in favour of accepting the recommendations on page 77 of this report, which is the Addercliff Regeneration Framework Progress Update. So thank you, Ruth and Alan, supported by Sean for the amazing work that's happening there as well. So we really do appreciate it. That therefore takes us to the close of our meeting today. It's a very short one, I don't think future meetings will be as short. But thank you very much, everyone, for your contribution today.